Testing, testing.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome on behalf of the Colorado League of Charter Schools, Denver Families for Public Schools, and African Leadership Group. Welcome to the DPS Candidate Forum this evening. Very excited to have assembled such a great group of individuals to talk this evening about the key issues confronting students and the district as we head into this next election cycle. My name is Dan Schaller. I'm president of the Colorado League of Charter Schools. And I just have a couple of bookkeeping items before we go ahead and get started tonight. First off, thanks to everybody who made it out this evening. In the end, we had about seventy people who RSVP'd to be here in person, but there are another one hundred and fifty to two hundred people online this evening. So we had a really strong turnout, and everyone's excited to hear from the candidates tonight. I want to say thank you to gals for hosting us here this evening. So thank you, Carol Bauer, for opening up your doors to us. If you have any questions for the candidates, please make sure to have them turned in either via the Google form for those of you online, or on one of the note cards for those of you here in the room by seven o'clock. That way, we can go through all of the questions that have been submitted and select the ones that we will get to towards the end of the forum. For those questions, we're not able to get to tonight because, as you might imagine, when we have twelve candidates here, we're not going to be able to get to every single question. But for those we're not able to get to tonight, we'll be sending them to the candidates afterwards. So please be sure to provide your email address alongside your question if you would like the candidate to follow up later. And then I just want to introduce our moderator this evening, Papa Ja, who is the founder and executive director of the African Leadership Group, which is a Colorado nonprofit created in 2006 to help improve the quality of life for African immigrants and members of the diaspora. Through social, economic, and educational empowerment programs, ALG helps families successfully integrate into their local community. A native of Senegal, Papa immigrated to Denver in 1998. He used his first job stocking books to teach himself how to read, write, and speak English. Beginning with an entry-level position in a local bank, over the next seventeen years, Papa ultimately climbed the ranks to become a regional vice president. And in 2017, Papa left his banking career to focus fully on running ALG. We're very grateful to him for being here tonight to engage with you all in questions. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody, and it's truly an honor to be here. We have a packed agenda. So, and on top of what Dan just shared with you, I'm an immigrant, and I believe in education. And why I believe in education, because I strongly believe education is the key that unlocks the door of opportunities. And the reason that I'm very excited to be here as an organization, one of the things that we believe in, and we say this all the time, if you're not at the table, you are on the menu. Being part of the conversation on such an important election is very, very important. As we know, the election coming up on November second is a crucial one. Voter will be deciding on four of the seven seats on the Denver Public School Board. At nearly ninety thousand students, Denver Public School is the largest school district in the state, and school board members are responsible for managing a budget of more than $1.1 billion. So this election and the people who win it is very important for the future of DPS. We are very grateful for the candidates for being here tonight to share their views and priorities with a large and important constituency of family from within the DPS family. Namely, the more than twenty percent of family in DPS have now chosen charter schools for their children. Tuition-free, nonprofit public schools that collectively serve over twenty thousand students all across Denver, charter schools have become a large and vital part of Denver family of public school options. The school range from alternative education campuses and Montessori school to STEM and languages emergent program to college prep and even health and fitness models such as that which exist here at our host this evening, Gals Charter School. So thank you to all the family in the room and virtually who took time of their busy life to be here and to learn about this candidate, and most importantly, on their views. You are part of the big charter school family, one that has a lot of influence over where DPS goes. In the future, and it's not an overstatement to say that the voting decision you make over the next three weeks will have a significant impact on the decisions that get made on behalf of your child for the next four years. Now, on your way this evening, you should have received a handout that includes the rundown of next steps after tonight. While we are very grateful to you for being here this evening, but your job is not done yet. You still need to make sure you vote between now and November second. Make sure you follow the steps on that handout between now and Election Day, and get your ballot in on time. Very important. So now, let's get right to it. This evening, we have eleven candidates and one surrogate, and not a lot of time, so let's jump into it so we can be sure to hit as many questions possible. Now, given the large number of candidates, we won't have time for every candidate to answer every single question this evening, but we'll have plenty of opportunity for engagement across the group. If a question is asked and you don't get to hear from a particular candidate on it, you can always follow up with them individually afterward via information available on the website, all of which are included on the handout you should have received when you walk in this evening. Now, to my immediate left, so we have Shoshi Ghatian from District Two, and we have Carolina Villagrana that's going to be joining us later, but for now, we have Angela Kobian that's here representing her, running for District Three, representing Central and Eastern Denver. We have Mike Deguille here, and Carrie Olson also who's here. Okay, Carrie Olson, we couldn't be here because of a prior commitment, but Kristen is here. Correct. Thank you. So running for District Four, representing Northeast Denver, we have Jean Fashau here, and Michelle Carrollburn, and Jose Silva. Running for at-large seat, meaning this person would represent the entire city, we have Marla Benavides, Scott Esserman, Vernon Jones Jr., Jane Shirley, and Nikki Yolick. So now, we're going to get to a brief introduction, and we want each candidate to tell us who you are, why are you running, what's your background, and why you should be elected. Now, we have a timer right there, and you each have one minute to answer this question. Please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Sachi Ilgaetan. I'm a candidate for Denver School Board in District Two. That's southwest Denver, as far north as Sixth Avenue, as far south as about Bellevue. A big district, very multicultural, diverse district, made up of a very diverse nonprofit community, as well as a diverse business community. And I'm running because I want to ensure that we get DPS on the right track. We veered off, and we need to get back on the right track and ensure that we're allocating funding from a very top-heavy administration down into the classrooms so that we're lowering classroom sizes, decreasing classroom sizes, and ensuring that we're providing this quality learning environment, providing the supports to our teachers. It's greatly needed. They've been through so much in the pandemic that support for our teachers is very important to me. I'm a mother, a DPS parent. I'm an entrepreneur, a nineteen-year veteran real estate agent, live and work in southwest Denver. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have Mike go next, hoping that Carolina will have a chance to join us later.
Good evening. My name is Mike Deguir, and I'm running for District Three for the Denver School Board. I've been a principal in Denver for twelve years. I was also a principal for sixteen years in three other districts in the metro area. I've been a teacher, a reading coordinator, and I've also worked for the last nine years coaching principals throughout Denver and across many states. I'm running for the school board because I believe strongly that we need to do things differently in terms of how we're educating our students and how we're measuring their achievement, as well as measuring student school quality. I am the proud grandfather of a student at Brown International. I'm also the proud father of a daughter who works just across the street at DCIS Baker, and I'm committed to doing everything we can to make sure that every student, no matter what school they attend, has an opportunity to achieve to their fullest potential. We need to make sure the resources are available for their mental and social, emotional supports, as well as for the learning that they need to be doing to support their well-being, as well as their learning throughout every area. I'm very proud to be here, and I'm excited to share questions and respond to your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. So Kristen, on behalf of Dr. Carrie. So we'll let her settle in a little bit, and we'll carry her. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristen Seidel. I'm here for Dr. Carrie Olson. She so said she couldn't come, but she's an adjunct professor, and she teaches every Tuesday. And I'm sure, as many of you are experiencing in your schools, subs are hard to come by. So she was unable to be here, but grateful that you all allowed me to kind of sit in for her. Carrie's been a teacher for thirty-three years until she came on the school board four years ago. That experience in the classroom with the students is what drives her every day, that she sits on that board and makes decisions. Everything she's done has raised student voice. And in fact, under her bold leadership, we had the most interactive superintendent search in DPS history with a student interview process that has been sent up nationally to the president to model for other schools to do. We need her to continue that leadership, continue your community building, and continue moving forward.
Thank you. Jean?
Good evening. Thank you, CLCS, for having me here today. My name is Jean Fashau, and I am a Denver native and DPS graduate. I graduated from Morehouse College in Atlanta, Georgia, and it's on that campus where I saw what excellence looked like for black men. Following the footsteps of men like Martin Luther King, Senator Warnock, Maynard Jackson, Spike Lee instantly motivated me to give back to my community. That was personified in the fact that we're expected to be servant leaderships as men of Morehouse. So when I got back to Denver, I served tirelessly in my community, working with kids, tutoring, coaching, and everything else in my community to make sure I'm giving back. Ultimately, I want to make sure that we're turning on the lights of opportunity for every kid that looks like me and comes from neighborhoods like I come from, because if we're able to do that, then we can meet the needs of every single student in DPS, and that is my tireless commitment to uplift the kids and community first.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Quattlebaum, and I'm a mother, I'm a proud mother of three DPS alumni. And I've spent over twenty years working within DPS as a parent and a volunteer to affect change and increase educational access to educational opportunities for all students. During this time, I have taken on racism at a comprehensive high school and was successful in that. Proud to say that just last year, we were able to graduate a Latino young man who was accepted into just about every college that he applied to, including Ivy League schools, doing dual track within that school. And so what I'm about is making sure that you, as the community, that you have a voice, that District Four, your voice is being heard.
Good evening, everybody. My name is the Reverend Dr. Jose Silva, and I'm a proud graduate of Denver West High School. I feel like I'm home. I grew up across the street from here, walked all across this neighborhood. And so if you drove in, you probably saw my fingerprints in this city. When people run for office, they offer ideas. Well, I'm here to tell you, I don't only have ideas, but I actually have solutions and have codified and completed those ideas in this community with the Josie Acosta Senior Center, the arts, community arts, the Sun Valley. These are things that I've done. These are the reasons why I'm running, because it's time that we get people elected that actually know the work of a board member. I'm a fiscal policy manager, so I'm going to focus on the policy, the fiscal, the budget. I'm going to focus on the policies that are outdated. I'm also going to focus on mental wellness, because our children need strong mental wellness. I lead the Colorado Association for Infant Mental Health, so we fight for babies. And last, and most importantly, fifty-two percent of the students that attend Denver Public Schools are Latino. We do not have a Latino male representation on that board, and we need a voice, so they are not left out, and I will be that voice.
Hi, everyone. Mi nombre es Marla Benavides, y soy madre de educación en el hogar. Durante los últimos diez años, la mayor parte de mi educación es en la ley y mediación. Trabajé con bofetes de abogados como asistente legal en inmigración y personal injury. Oops, sorry. My name is Marla Benavides, and I was a DPS paraprofessional at Keppner for two years. I left for a position in a law firm, but a few years back, Colorado gave me and my husband and I a guest teacher sub-licence. We both subbed for about a year. I'm a homeschool educator who has been teaching for ten years. Most of my schooling is in law, politics, and mediation. I was paralegal for five years before leaving my career to stay home with my son. What I have learned about how to train my child in the way he should go is that history points to supporting parents in raising children with moral virtue and knowledge. I believe, like Papa, that, and I strongly believe in education, and literacy matters.
Thank you. Scott, please.
Good evening. I'm Scott Esserman, candidate for Denver Public Schools Board at Large. I want to first thank the Colorado League of Charter Schools, the Gals Administration, and Papa Ja for having us here tonight. Second, I want to let you know that I'm running because I'm a twenty-year educator. I've taught across this city. I helped open Northfield High School. I'm an educator, and I know what it takes to educate our students, and I know what it takes to educate all of our students. I'm also a parent. My daughter graduated this past spring from Manuel High School, where she chose to go. My son is currently an eighth grader at Denver School of Science and Technology at Montview. I've served on the District Accountability Committee as both a co-chair and currently as a chair, and I've served on collaborative school committees across the city. I'm committed to our students. I want to take part in every conversation that has to do with our students and no conversations that don't. I'm about student outcomes. I was about it in the classroom. I will be about it at the board table. Thank you.
Thank you. Vernon?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Vernon Jones Jr., candidate for the DPS Board of Education at Large. Glad to be here with you. I am the proud father of five amazing kids. They are here with me tonight, at least three of the most amazing of the five. The two boys are at college. My wife is here, and my mother's here. My mother, who is a thirty-plus-year retired black educator, and not only that, so you can clap for her on that one. Not only is she a retired black educator, she is a retired black educator who was very much involved in DCTA every year of her service to Denver Public Schools. So, Mom, thank you for that. I'm here tonight because I believe, like Dr. King said in 1963, that the bank of justice is not bankrupt. We have failed to serve Black and Brown children the best that we can, and we can do better. And so I'm here tonight to run, to ensure that we deliver on the promises that we've made to my children, to your children, and to the ninety-plus-thousand kids in Denver Public Schools.
I'm Jane Shirley, and I've been saying that I had a thirty-four-year career, but I just did the math, and it's like at thirty-seven. Much of that has been in education, but I did take a detour and started up my own business, and I've been heavily involved in entertainment and the arts. And that has brought me to a place where I have a pretty unique skillset and approach things around what is possible, what can we create. I started my pursuit of the possible in the eighties when I was teaching at North Middle School, and I applied what I learned to transform a high school in Aurora. And then I was fortunate enough to lead a program that helped to design and open a number of schools across Denver, across Colorado. And I just had a conversation with one of my graduates who is leading in New York. I'm in the race because I have expertise in organizational and leadership development.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Nikki Yolick. Thank you so much for this opportunity to make an introduction. I have been a community organizer now in Denver for almost a decade, and actually just became a hospice volunteer coordinator in the last few weeks, which has been very exciting. I lived in the East Colfax neighborhood of Northeast Denver, and the two reasons that I'm running is, number one, I believe that DPS needs a community organizer, someone who will go in and figure out what does the community want, what is the will of the community, and make sure that DPS is run as a reflection of that will. And number two, on a more personal level, my partner and I, as soon as she finishes nursing school at Regis, we plan on having children of our own. Ours will be mixed-race children, and I want them to be educated in a far more equitable DPS than what we currently have. Real quick, my top three priorities. Number one, first and foremost, I want to make sure we have strong neighborhood schools, work with communities, simplify administrative processes, and move significant funding into our neighborhood schools. Number two, really give educators real power in our administrative decision-making, to de-emphasize standardized testing, make learning fun again, and give DPS back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, welcome to Carolina Villagrana. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carolina Villagrana, and I'm running because of stories like my mom, whose voice was ignored when she addresses disparity, inequity of quality of education that was happening between the bilingual classroom and that of the English classroom, and her voice was ignored, which is a story that continues to happen to this day. I'm running because of me, little Carolina, who was performing on a first-grade level while about to enter fourth grade, and it went kindergarten first, second, third, four years without actually knowing my progress until we had meaningful data. I'm running because there was a student when I entered the University of Colorado Denver, my senior year of high school, who went to a local high school and stated, "At veces siento que no merezco ir a la universidad," which translates to, "At times, I feel as if I do not deserve to go to college." Leaves me wondering what experiences our students are having in order to ask or make this statement. And it is the reason why I stepped into the field of education. I've taught kindergarten all the way through eighth grade, while also stepping into as a school leadership within assistant principal roles and instructional, and it's why I'm here today, because I believe our students deserve the best.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. So we also want to give a shout out to our parent and student and community member that's following us online, and you'll most likely get questions from them also. But at this time, I would like to invite a parent to come and ask a question, and for the specific question, we would like to have the candidate from District Two and District Four to answer this one. Please help me welcome Tony Salas-Alvarado, a parent of a student from Strive Prep Rise. Tony, thank you. Is it on?
Good evening. My name is Tony Salas-Alvarado. I am the proud parent of a junior at Strive Prep Rise and a resident of District Four. Strive Prep Green Valley Ranch Middle School and Strive Prep High School have been a great choice for me and my child. Strive Prep GBR contacted my husband and I for a home visit way back in 2016, and since then, we have not turned back. The high-quality instruction and structure at the school was a great start for my daughter, who began her sixth-grade year at a third-grade reading level. I am happy to say and say that thanks to the support of Strive Prep, she is now a 4.1 GPA junior at Strive Prep Rise, and hopefully, an Arizona State University student in a couple of years. I am grateful for the focus on preparing our students for their future and their incredible support of families. I cannot thank Ms. Lindsay Lau and Danny Morello enough for what they have done for my family and myself. My nine-year-old daughter is also looking forward to following in her sister's footsteps when it comes time for middle school and high school. So we want to be sure that schools like mine are supported so that she gets that opportunity. Will you support charter schools such as Strive Prep and the new unique educational models they represent for families? Thank you.
Thank you, Tony, for the question. I am the union-endorsed candidate, but that doesn't necessarily mean that I'm completely against schools like Strive when they are providing the quality education that we, as parents, are looking for. As a DPS parent myself, that is something that I'm passionate about. I'm passionate about ensuring that every school and every classroom is providing that quality learning environment for your student. My twenty-four-year-old graduated from DPS. I graduated from Lincoln High School in southwest Denver. I have deep roots and deep ties in my community, and so I'm always looking out for the families in my community. If they are choosing to send their student to Strive, and Strive is what's working for them, that's wonderful. That's what we want. We want students to be able to be prepared if they're looking to go to higher education, like your daughter, or students that are looking to go to vocational or trade school. That's what I want. I want that type of preparation for our students.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. When I think about charter schools, I also think about, in general, what are the experiences that we want to add for our students, and what is the best fit for them? I think about my parents who had to make a hard choice for me that I just shared as to being behind grade level and also having to find a school that supported my needs. I also think about, it's more also about what the experience and really building that passion for the love to learn. Whether that's a comprehensive, an innovation, or a charter school is really key. For example, this past summer, I had a chance to talk to a student who chose to go to the American Indian Academy because they wanted to learn Lakota, the language. If that builds passion, and that builds excitement for learning, that's what I'm about, because I'm about making sure that our students have the options that they hope to have for the future.
Thank you.
Good evening. Once again, my name is Jean Fashau. I do believe in the presence of charter schools in the ecosystem of Denver Public Schools. As long as every school is meeting the needs of the diverse students that exist in DPS, for example, in Montbello, where there's over fifteen languages being spoken, able to meet the needs of every single child in that building, where we are disrupting the idea of deficit thought, where we look at students, whether it's Black students, English-language learners, or students with disabilities, as we start to disrupt those deficit thinking and capitalize on the brilliance of every single child. As long as that's happening in every single school, then our children will benefit greatly. So going forward, it's a matter of holding everybody accountable, making sure the people in front of our kids are doing the work that's necessary for our children to develop into the amazing people that we all need them to be, and start disrupting some of the systems of oppression that exist. And that starts in the classroom, regardless if it's a charter school, innovation school, or a traditional school.
Thank you. Michelle?
Hi, my name is Michelle Quattlebaum, and I think that I'm probably in a unique position to many on this panel tonight. As a parent, we actually made the choice, and we have experience at private schools, at charter schools. I actually helped open a charter school in Green Valley Ranch. We have experienced innovation schools and comprehensive DPS-run schools. And the reason I bring that up is I understand that families make the choices that they make to send their children to the schools that meet their needs. And so we have to make sure that we have choices, and we have to provide opportunity for our parents to make those choices. I am also endorsed by DCTA, so I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Thank you. Jose? Jose?
Great question. I often think about when I was 14 and my best friend was murdered standing next to me, and we ended up homeless. I navigated through high school at West High School homeless, and I got to my junior year, and I ended up at Colorado Charter High School. And at Colorado Charter High School, I was able to catch up on my credits and go back to West my senior year and graduate on time. And so because of a charter school, I was able to do that and then ultimately become a doctor. Since that time, I've actually been able to lead as a school teacher, school leader, catalyst high school, which was a charter school, with twice-inceptional students. And these students were told that they weren't going to be able to make it in the world. I just didn't believe that. These are students that I was able to take out and build homes with Jimmy Carter, President Jimmy Carter, participate in the Meals on Wheels Plan, and changed their lives. I also sat on the board of Omar D. Blair. And when I talk about solutions, and many of our candidates will have ideas, you can go and look at what I was able to complete at Omar D. Blair. I took the school to one-to-one in technology, raised a million dollars, and then I helped reform the school discipline model with restorative practices. I'm about solutions, and so charter schools are a valuable place in our network.
Thank you, Jose. Thank you for all your responses. And we have another question coming online from a student. And for the specific one, we would like the candidate from District Three and at large to answer this question. So we have a student, Ari Oringer, a student from Compass Academy that's going to be asking the question. Ari? And while we wait on him. Yeah, go ahead, Ari.
It's actually Oringer.
Oringer, thank you.
Yeah, um, hold on. Students are the main reason the district exists. Yet many times, voices of students are not heard or included when big decisions are made. How will you involve students' voice as a leader if you are elected?
Thank you so much for your question.
Thank you for your question. That's an excellent question, because we need to make sure that we're involving students in all aspects of the curriculum as well as the instructional practices that are taking place. I would recommend that we have at least one representative or several representatives from each high school meet together to be sure that they are bringing the voices of the students for the curriculum changes that need to be made throughout the district. The student voice is essential in order to change the learning environment that's happening right now. Recent research is showing us that juniors and seniors and recent graduates are telling us that we have too narrow of a focus on academics. We need to be involving students in much more engaging experiences. We need to have more project-based learning, more critical thinking opportunities, more problem-solving experiences for students. Their voice is critical. They need to have leadership opportunities, extracurricular experiences, possible internships and apprenticeships for possible job-like work that they can experience and learn about. We're not providing the opportunities that we need to for our students, and their voice is critical. We need to have a structure and a system for that to happen so that we can understand their needs and follow through on them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that question. Student voice is so important to Dr. Olson. As I mentioned during the superintendent search, creating a student forum was one of her passions and making sure that was part of the decision process, and that was heavily weighted. Beyond that, she sits on the Students Council, and anything that students come from high schools across DPS goes straight to Dr. Moreau. She takes it there. But Dr. Moreau is taking her model a step further in getting rid of the middleman. She's very sad. She's going to be kicked off council because they're just going to start meeting with the superintendent, so their voice is heard louder. This has been her passion. Her own campaign manager is a former student, so raising that voice is her passion and why she does what she does. It's why she was in the classroom for 33 years, started a nonprofit to take her students to Europe. So, thank you, and we hope to keep that moving forward with her.
Thank you. Anybody else at large or District Three?
I didn't answer the first question, so I'll answer this question and the first question. Yes, I agree that I am for choice. As a homeschool mom, that's a choice that I have, an option, and parents have the absolute right to raise their kids, their children, and I believe that that choice should be out there. Si los padres tienen el derecho absoluto de criar a sus hijos y tiene esa opción de las escuelas es para ellos. And yes, I agree that high school students deserve a voice, and I will be that voice for the high school students in all academic matters.
Thank you. Scott?
I'm waiting for him to reset the timer. I can do it in 15 seconds, but it won't be as good an answer.
Just go ahead. Go ahead, Scott.
So, one, it's important to note that this is something that's been vitally important to me throughout my career and throughout my work as a parent and as a volunteer. At least two times in two different schools, three times in three different schools, when we were looking to hire a principal, I insisted that in the room during that entire process be student voice. At Manuel High School, we had freshmen, a sophomore, a junior, and a senior in our principal search process. It's essential to me. It's important to note that we have a student voice in leadership department that does strong work, and clearly we need to use it better. We previously had a student board of education, and I actually think that the most important part of this is to reach out to students to see how they want their voice included. Because far too often, we get a question like this, and we make decisions as adults about what we do for you or to you instead of asking you, what would be best for you? Denver Public Schools has to make a stronger commitment to engaging with community, and that includes especially our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Student voice is essential. One of my most exciting roles that I've had as I've worked in the district is working with the students on the student board of education. It was the greatest time. You got to work with high schoolers from every high school in the district. You got to hear their opinions about everything, and this wasn't just concerns about lunch. This wasn't just concerns about dress code. These were concerns about the real issues that we were dealing with as a district. And I'm committed to that because I believe that when you include people, you break patterns of oppression. Some of us have read Pedagogy of the Oppressed, and it says, those who act, don't act dialogically. They don't try to lead the people, they try to manipulate the people. So if you exclude student voice, you're not trying to lead students, you're not trying to include students, you're trying to manipulate them and use them for your own end. So I want to make sure that we have a district where students feel included, not manipulated, and their voices matter.
Thank you, Vernon.
As an adult and a professional in education, I was in situations where people wanted to hear the teacher voice or the principal voice. And my experience typically was that we shared our thinking, and then it fell on deaf ears. The leadership did whatever they were going to do in the first place. And so I learned from that, that it's not enough just to have the voice, but we have to understand the perspective. My first leadership job was at South Middle School in Aurora, and the first thing I did was shadow a sixth grader, a seventh grader, and an eighth grader. And I can tell you by second period of the sixth-grade shadow, I was ready to poke my eyes out because I was bored out of my skull, and it gave me an empathy. I think we have to look at design from the student perspective, and when we ask for student voice, we have to listen with the kind of empathy that comes from understanding because we've observed.
Thank you.
So there's four ways that I would really like for us to bring in student voice that I'm going to address here, so I'm going to try to go quickly. Number one, for years now, there has been a proposal, the Student Voice, Student Vote Proposal. A group called Project Voice that operates up in Global Larry Swansy has been advocating for this for years to allow 16, 17-year-olds to vote in DPS elections. Let's give our DPS kids real power in decision-making. I want to see us do that. Number two, we have a serious enrollment crisis in DPS that it's expected to get worse in the coming years. We need to organize community-based plans with every single community around every school in DPS, and that absolutely includes the students of those schools. Three, I've spoken a lot about doing something along the lines of a community action team, essentially a community committee that would put forward quarterly recommendations the board would be required to vote on. That way, the board, if the board wants to ignore the will of the community, they have to do it very publicly. I'd like to see a student version of that. And lastly, as the Sierra Club endorsed candidate, I would like to see us empower and ask DPS students to lead and design DPS's response to climate change. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, I just want to remind you, if you have a question, if you're in the audience and have a question, use the note card you grab on your way in and turn it to Dan over there, and we'll get a chance to get to it. So candidates, thank you for answering those questions. Now, I have a series of questions I'll be asking. There are a lot of issues we want to get tonight, but because this forum was designed primarily for and by the Denver charter school community, this next series of questions focuses on choice in charter school. So there are a series of questions, yes or no, and I would like everyone to respond via show of hands, to raise your hand if that's a yes for you, and keep your hand down if that's a no. So after everyone has responded to this question by yes or no, each candidate will have 60 seconds to explain any one or multiple of your responses to this question. That's a series of questions, so you might want to also take note on the way. So the first one. Parents guardian are the first teachers of their children and therefore hold a great responsibility to choose what is best for their children. If elected, would you introduce policy that would limit parent guardian choice and the school option available to their children? Yes or no? Raise your hand if that's a yes, keep your hand down if that's a no. Okay. Parents guardian are the first teacher for their children and therefore hold a great responsibility to choose what's best for their children. If elected, would you introduce policies that would limit parents guardian choice and the school option available to their children? Okay? So we have one hand from Nikki, right? Okay, so we'll come back to that. So, the second question. Do you believe the development of school choice in charter school over the past 15 years in DPS has positively impacted public education in Denver? Do you believe the development of school choice in charter school over the past 15 years in DPS has positively impacted public education in Denver? If that's a yes, raise your hand. If that's a no, keep your hand down. All right, thank you. This is the next question. Public charter schools are tools that communities can use to self-determine? Would you seek to put policies in place that will take away this tool and stop the creation of new charter school? In other words, would you support a moratorium or oppose on the creation of new charter school in Denver? If that's a yes, raise your hand. If that's a no, keep your hand down. So, would you, in other words, would you support a moratorium or oppose on creation of new charter school in Denver? Okay? Thank you. So the next question and the last one. Do you believe the DPS school board should fairly and equitably include its charter school in the services, funding, and facilities they provide all their school? Do you believe the DPS school board should fairly and equitably include its charter school in the services, funding, and facilities they provide to all their schools? If that's a yes, raise your hand. If that's a no, keep your hand down. Thank you. Now, each candidate have now 60 seconds to elaborate on the way they answer if that's a yes or no, and Shoshia, I'll start with you. Thank you.
So I want the community here to understand that I'm coming from the perspective of someone that has deep roots and ties in southwest Denver. And in southwest Denver, we have half of the total of schools are now charter and innovation schools. Of the 19 schools on the closure list, 10 of those are neighborhood public schools. And it's very concerning to me that while, yes, gentrification and other economic factors are affecting this, have brought us to this list, I also believe that we need to be looking at the factor of the number of charter schools and innovation schools that we've opened. It's a great number that now I believe is affecting this list, right? And so I have to look at that. I have to analyze that information. And so, you know, one of my reasons for saying yes, I would support a moratorium, because we need to be looking at those factors as a whole. We can't just look at one set of information. We need to look at everything.
Thank you. Thank you. Carolina, yes?
When I think about the course of choice and specifically charter schools as southwest Denver, I think about what was and the reason why it came to be. What was was that our students were given the equitable opportunities to prosper academically and have a life full of options. There is a reason why charter schools and innovations came into play, because our students deserved better, and that's very much what I want to make sure, that all schools, whether it's innovation, charter, or comprehensive, that it is providing the quality of education that our students deserve. So I will say, yes, it did push the envelope and did have an impact for our kids, and I'm going to continue supporting models that have had that impact.
Thank you.
I think we have an opportunity to look carefully at what's happening in charter schools, neighborhood schools, and innovation schools today. There's enough new research that's telling us that we're not preparing our students for life with the life skills they need to be successful in jobs, as well as the right mindsets for them to be contributing members of society. That's why I would strongly encourage that charter schools have more significant oversight for the parents' sake in terms of what's really happening in those schools so that we can be sure that students are gaining the skills that they need to be successful. We're learning from all levels of school governance that students are not graduating with the necessary skills to be successful. Jobs are telling us, students today, when they're in kindergarten, in 2034, there will be jobs for which they don't exist. We've got to change the way we're doing education and not focus so much on standardized testing. I appreciate the work that most of the charter schools have done when they've improved academic achievement for some students, but that doesn't mean that we're doing everything we can for those students to be successful in life. We've got to take advantage of that learning and change what we're doing in terms of the oversight for all of our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this question, or this list of questions. I am a DPS mom. I've gone through traditional school and charter schools. These are discussions Dr. Olson and I have often. Often what we talk about is we need to quit pitting our communities against each other. You can't be for charters or against charters. Carrie is for DPS students and making sure we serve all 90,000 DPS students, no matter where their families choose to send them. So I think that's the first thing to say there. The other thing about charters that I always find interesting is they were started by the teachers' union. It was AFT who started them to share these ideas to make sure all schools are successful. And it's time that we go back to those charter roots and really look at how can we, what are we learning in charter schools and what are we learning in our neighborhood schools and how are we going to serve our children best? And lastly, I answered yes to the DPS fairly funding because we got to treat all of our schools with the same standards when it comes to funding, oversight, and everything else. All schools should be treated equal.
Time, thank you.
As a classroom teacher myself, coming from the charter school realm, I have seen what it looks like for a charter school to serve a community the right way. It's important for us to understand that every institution has made mistakes in serving the kids that need us to be the best way, the best education system possible, and it's important for us to recognize when we do make those mistakes, that we make those changes quickly and adequately. And I have seen that happen as a classroom teacher myself, where we serve the needs of the community and the children that live in that community. It's important, no matter what happens, that we're elevating community voice in every decision that we're making regarding charter schools as well. And school funding should be equitable across the board because ultimately, it's about the children and it's about the communities that need us the most. So we have to make sure every decision that we make has that lens in mind, because my work as a classroom teacher will be ineffective if the community's needs aren't being met along the way, and that includes teachers and students.
Thank you.
As I shared before, I have the experience of sending my children to just about every type of schooling that there is. And having started, helped to start a charter school, which is actually Omar D. Blair in Green Valley Ranch, absolutely, parents absolutely, parents need to have the choice and the flexibility to send their children to what works for them. And yeah, charter schools have, they have had a positive impact on our students. So have innovation schools, and so have district-run schools. We also need to take a look at the schools that we are forming. Charter schools do have a root in the community. Some of the most successful charter schools are whole grown. It was community voice that said, this is what we need. This is how to best serve the community.
Thank you for this question and this opportunity. As I think about this, I think about my time on the board at Omar D. Blair. Here was a school that had never filed their nonprofit status. Because of my expertise and skillset in that I was able to complete our Form 1023 and help us raise a million dollars so that we would have equitable funding to stand in the gap and fill in the needs which we did not have because of Denver Public Schools. And so because we have the à la carte model, innovation, traditional, comprehensive, we have to first understand the budget. I'm an individual who leads a budget. 35 individuals depend on me knowing a budget, being able to raise money. And so we need to become fiscally minded. I'll do that with the forensic audit. We need to know the budget numbers and be able to explain to communities where the money is going. Charter schools have an important place in our community. But if Denver Public Schools can't even tell our own community what their strategic plan is, then we need individuals that can get in there and do that so that charter schools have a lifelong longevity within our community. Because right now, if the board goes a certain way, even though people have answered a certain way, watch their actions, is what I'll say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm a homeschool mom who believes she can train her child better than DPS schools. And that's why I'm running. Number two, I believe that charter schools do a really good job of focusing on literacy that puts, that empowers a student to a successful life. And three, I believe that we should hold on, we should hold off on state tests and national tests until 16 years of age. I also believe that we should be holding the school boards accountable by the Constitution. And I, when I sit down in front of my son, and this is how I give him a voice, I said, what do you want to do today? I let him talk to me and tell me what he wants to do today. But then, if I don't agree that we should be doing that, I say, you know what? I'm sorry, we gotta be doing reading, writing, and arithmetic.
Thank you.
I want to start by reiterating what Kristen said on behalf of Carrie, which is that those conversations that divide us mean that we're not talking about what's best for students. And it is essential to me that we are focused on what is doing, what's best for students. On the question of the positive impact of charter schools during the course of their history, no question that there have been charters that have had tremendous positive impact on communities. I have had the privilege of being able to enroll my son in one of those charter schools. But I've also watched as charter schools that were serving community were forced to close. Boys Athletic Leadership School, the cube this year, that did detriment to those families. And that's a problem. So I can't say that there was overwhelming positive impact. Has there been positive impact? Yes. Secondly, yes, I believe in fair and equitable distribution of resources. And I believe that that has to happen in a fair and equitable way. So that when charters get their full per pupil revenue, if they're going to access those resources, they're going to need to pay for those as well. That that's got to happen as well. It's got to be fair and equitable both ways.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Yes, as a parent of kids who have attended every form of DPS school, definitely believe charters play a significant role. One thing that I will say is that we have to ensure that as we talk about the charter and traditional conversation, we have to own the fact that we've lost so much ground with this same narrative going back and forth. Our traditional schools have not learned from our charter schools. There's not been back and forth learning that was supposed to be the design of the system. Is that we are supposed to be in this together, learning from each other, working together. I will also add that going back to equitable resourcing of charters, as Scott said, I've seen, he said he's seen charters close. I've seen black-led charters close because they did not have the same resources that other white-led charters have. We need to talk about that as well. We need to talk about the CCI's, the Amandala's, the Northeast Academies that are not given the same support to succeed because they don't have the same network when they are established. So a lot of work to be done.
Thank you, Vernon.
This is an incredibly complex question, and I'm weary of these forums where I get one minute to answer. So I'm going to start my answer, and I will be very happy to continue the conversation because it's important. I believe public education should be a public good. And I'm in the race, because I think we're at risk of losing our public education system. I find it interesting that people are saying that we shouldn't pit one group against the other, but this question asked us to take sides. This is complex. Parent choice without limits means that parents who want to exclude LGBTQ students from their school can do that, because it's their choice. Parents whose values don't align with interracial marriage can exclude that because we don't have limits. We have a messed up system.
Thank you.
And we have to look at it as a system.
Thank you.
I want to be very clear about my position when it comes to choice, innovation, and charter schools, because it is detailed, but I think it's pretty clear. I'm not in favor of a moratorium, because I don't think it makes sense to just put together blanket statements without getting into the details of it. On the other hand, I do not believe we should be opening new innovation or charter schools in DPS until we do several things. I'm concerned that educators in those schools don't have collective bargaining or union rights. Oftentimes, those schools do not let in, provide special education services to the extent they are legally mandated. We have a lack of accountability with those schools, with appointed boards. It can be very difficult to get information on operations and finances in charter schools. And so what I'd like to see us do is really simplify the choice process. That's why, that's why I raised my hand when it came to limiting it, because I thought that was the honest answer. But I really don't want to limit. I want to simplify it so that low-income families can better navigate it and address the fact that we've created a class system in DPS. And I don't want parents, we need to strengthen our neighborhood schools so that parents don't feel like their only choice is to choice across town.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Candidate, you're doing very well managing the clock, and we appreciate your help on this. So now we are transitioning to question from the audience. And due to timing, we should be able to get to four of these audience question tonight. But again, if your question doesn't get answered, we'll be sharing those who indicated they want a response from the candidate so they can follow up with you after. You can also feel free to reach out to the candidate directly via the website included on the handout. And though that's following online also, you can still submit your question online. So the first one, and this is for candidate for District Two and At-Large, candidate to answer this question. While Superintendent Marrero recently announced that he was posing conversation related to small school and consolidation, it's likely this topic will surface sooner than later. When it does, what are your thoughts on how this should be handled, especially as relate to the possible closure and consolidation of elementary school in the area of West Colfax? District Two and At-Large. So I'll start with At-Large over there to come down to Shoshia.
All right, so wonderful question. So absolutely, when it comes to this enrollment crisis, I'm very glad that we've put a pause on it. But at the end of the day, I believe communities really need to be organizing. Immediately, we need to get out ahead of this. The fact of the matter is that DPS is going to continue to not be a very transparent district to the community for at least a few more months. And this enrollment crisis isn't going to go away. It's probably going to get worse, as we're hearing from reports all around us. So in terms of how we're going to address this, as I alluded to at the very beginning, I want DPS leadership to work with the communities around every school in DPS for how we're going to get the enrollment up, for how we're going to strengthen funding. And specifically, we're going to make sure the PTAs are operating, make sure that they're well-versed in community engagement, make sure that the CSCs are meeting regularly, make sure that they are empowered to weigh in on school decisions. We're going to put together a community-based, not corporate-based, but community-based marketing and fundraising plan so that we can address the issues that are causing communities to feel like they can't send their kids to these schools. So those are the things I'd like to see us do. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is inappropriate to make reactive decisions based on insufficient and possibly flawed data. As I look at the data, I see a lot of pre-K and kindergarten numbers that have declined. And we just went through a pandemic where many kindergarten families said, this doesn't make sense. I'm just going to keep my child home. DPS, if I am elected, will need to find the money to fund the schools until we have sufficient data to understand the impact that the pandemic has had on our city as a whole. And once we know that, then we're going to need to be thinking about a comprehensive and long-range plan, because the entire geography of Denver needs to come into play. We have segregated schools based on our enrollment patterns and our boundaries. And we have the ability to fix it, but it's not going to be an easy fix. And reacting to an enrollment dip by closing down schools is not appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we definitely need to be a conversation that we begin with community and one that we begin now. I think, again, to Jane's point, I agree. We need to make sure the data is right. We also need to make sure that we are, I would say, taking an equity audit of the current situation, because you do not want children and families in a situation where they are in an under-enrolled school and then not receiving the resources that they need, not receiving the arts, the music, the, all of those different things that come when schools are at a certain enrollment number. Having led schools, having supervised schools, there is a number that gives us economies of scale. And if you do not have those economies of scale, it is very hard for the staff, for the students, because you are not giving them the equitable education that they deserve. So what I would do first in Southwest and other areas is to take an equity audit and say, where do we need to, right now, begin to invest and plug in resources so that those schools are supplemented with what they need to navigate this crisis?
Thank you, Vernon.
Thank you, Vernon.
First and foremost, this is a community engagement question. This is about how historically downtown has acted upon communities. And that's what happened with this process, and it's what can't continue to happen. We have to have genuine and authentic community engagement, which means that it is community-led and district-supported. So what we attempted to do at Denver Discovery School, when the board wanted to shut down Denver Discovery School, we are often given enrollment numbers as a reason for our crisis, as a manufactured crisis. The enrollment numbers at Bromwell don't look any better than the enrollment numbers in a lot of these black and Latino schools that have been targeted for closure. We got to wonder why that is. And we have to engage with our community. We have to reach out to our community. We have to talk to our community. And most importantly, we have to listen to our community and what they need. Finally, we have to reconsider how we're funding schools, because as long as we're funding on a per pupil basis, we're going to start running into these same crises.
Time, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
I absolutely agree with Scott Esserman that we do have to listen to our communities. I believe that many, in my, at least in my community, which is Southeast Denver, many parents are opting out and homeschooling or choicing to private schools. So we got to look at what's going on in the community and why parents are leaving. Also, in my school, my neighborhood school, 75% are Latinos, and they're not being taught to read, write, and do math. So most of the reason why the schools are closing must be because they're not teaching the basics, and parents are not happy. And so they're transferring their children over to another, to choicing out to another school. So we do definitely have to listen to the community. And also, I wanted to answer my colleague Jane, who wanted to bring in politicize it a little bit. And I want to say that what makes us American is not, we're not American because, never mind.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we'll come to Carolina. Yes, please, I think.
As an educator and a long, a community member of southwest Denver, you know, I've seen the impact, and I've had the personal impact myself that I've had to leave a position because of the constraints of budget and low enrollment. And at the same time, I also think about the opportunity it presents itself as an educator, as someone who looks forward to enroll their child in the future of DPS, is that we truly get to define the next chapter of what DPS could look like. You know, we talk about southwest Denver and the changes of southwest Denver, and it's an opportunity to really build a multicultural and a multi-generational coalition for our students. And really is an opportunity to really say, we say we talk about community partnership, but this is truly the moment to build that community partnership together. And what that truly means for our kids, not just for the next year, not the two years down the road, we're actually making decisions for generations down the road for our kids.
Time.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree. We need to be making these decisions with our community. It has to be a very strong, community-based decision. There's 10 out of 19 schools that are, that they're looking at for closure and/or consolidation. That's 10, more than half, in southwest Denver. It's very heartbreaking. As a DPS parent, we went through this already approximately 14 years ago when the district shut down my son's middle school shut down my son's middle school when he was heading into that middle school from fifth grade. We went and checked with the neighborhood just north of us, and they were closing that middle school as well. So we end up having to drive really far out of Southwest Denver to get him to the next middle school. And it was a message to the community that we were failing, that our schools were failing. And I don't want to, when I'm in that seat, I want to ensure that the community is a part of this process. There needs to be an equitable process with community to make this, to ensure that we're protecting our, our neighborhood public schools. These are the beacon of every neighborhood, of every community in Southwest Denver.
Thank you, Sushi. Thank you. We have the second question from the audience, and this is for District Four and Three to answer, and we'll start with Jose there. What would you, what will you do to ensure equity for Black families in DPS? One minute.
Yes, great question. I'm a, I'm mixed race, multiracial, Black and Latino. I'm a Chicano. I consider myself Blacksakin. My doctor degree is in leadership for educational equity. I have a doctor degree in this. My research is in restorative practices, in ending deficit learning, and focusing on social situation understanding. This is the lens I bring. I'm an expert in equity. I launched my campaign on addressing equity and budget and policies. And so that's the lens I will lead. I'm known as Mr. Accountability. I know that is scaring some people, and I'm okay with that. I, I got my time. No, I'm about 20 seconds left. And so, see, I even know my own accountability. But this is the thing we need. We need individuals that understand the structural systems and how to dismantle it. People can use all the buzzwords they want, but have they done the intentional work? Have they done the research? Have they engaged in that work? I've been doing this work since I was at the Peton Foundation in 1998, writing policy, I mean, working on youth development curriculum, writing policy at 24 years old. This is the work. I know equity, and I have a degree in it. So why not hire the most experienced expertise individual for the job?
Thank you, Jose. Michelle.
So ensuring that our Black families have resources distributed, distributed to them equitably really just takes courage. It takes courage to say, the resources need to go over here, so we're going to put the resources over here. The, the work that I did at George Washington High School, that's exactly what I did with results. We needed resources. We needed to shift resources. We did that. We, at the time, we had a school within a school where less than a fourth of the students were receiving nearly half of the budget. That's not equitable. That's not even fair. And so now we shifted that. And now all students have access to equitable, to quality educational opportunities. So I have done the work within DPS to distribute equity.
Thank you, Michelle.
As a classroom teacher, I know firsthand what it looks like to serve a classroom predominantly, maybe one or two students that may not be part of a Black, Black community or a Brown community. Equity looks like making sure we're disrupting deficit mindsets, developing growth mindsets, and disrupting some of that narrative around a lack of being able to accomplish great things. The second thing is trauma-informed practices because many of our students, especially coming out of a pandemic, have a lot of traumas that we need to kind of disrupt, provide the services that they need to be successful in the classroom because they can't focus on learning if they can't focus on, if they can't get over the things that are going on inside their mind. And it also means building bridges with the families that, that those children belong to. They must be included in the conversation of education and not excluded. It is a, it takes a village. When we ask ourselves if our children are doing well, we have to make sure that that answer is yes, they are, or we're not doing our jobs as family, as community, as educators, and as a school district.
Time.
Thank you. Yes, Kristen. Thank you.
Yep. So first of all, we have the Black Excellence Plan, which Michelle just talked about, how well she's executing it at GW. And we're so lucky to have leaders like Michelle, but we also know there's other schools that are executing it as well. And so working with the different schools and ensuring that every school is getting what they need to actually execute this plan. Dr. Olson is also going to continue working with students. We want to serve students and make sure they're getting the best of what they need. That means they're talking to them. It's working with the amazing students at MLK Junior, where, with the No Justice, No Peace Resolution and their podcasts, and continuing that work that she's doing there. And it's also working with our policymakers and seeing what we could do to better recruit our educators of color and make sure that we're keeping them there. So it's really working in depth with our educators, in depth with our policymakers, and in depth with our students.
Thank you so much. Yes, Mike.
There's a lot we can do in this area, and the main thing we need to do is change our mindset about working with our Black families with respect to a positive attitude about their ability to achieve in terms of our students. There's enough research around today that knows, that lets us know that all children can achieve. They just achieve at different rates. Our measurement system is not working. The achievement gap that we've been talking about for years is artificial because it's measuring something that is not fair, or, and is not valid, and is not, and is definitely racist in terms of the way it's set up because of the standardized testing that we've been using. We need to follow the, the advice and the prescriptions that were in the Bailey Report years ago. We've, we've waited too long in that regard to get things done for our families. And we need to also make sure that we're recruiting, retaining Black leaders and Black teachers and supporting them with a fair evaluation system. Our current evaluation system is a deficit-based model. It doesn't honor the assets that each person brings to the, to the, to the table. We also need to make sure that our curriculum is relevant, engaging, and meaningful for all of our students, that it speaks to their voice and their experiences.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So the next question from the audience is for District Two and Four, and Sushi, I'll start with you. So what specifically is your plan to increase the academic achievement of all students in Denver?
Yeah, first I want to share, because this last question is very near and dear to my heart, I want to share that as a Latina, as a Brown woman, I believe that the liberation and the freedom of the Latino community is directly tied to the liberation and the freedom to our Black community. And in order for us to uplift our Black and Brown students, we need to provide that quality learning environment, and that means that we're looking at reducing classroom sizes. We need to get our teachers, our paras, our, our teaching staff really focusing in, on each of our students. And so that starts there. But we need to be allocating some funding from this top-heavy administration back down into the classrooms in order for this to happen. And, and we need to, you know, ensure that these learning environments are provided, especially, Southwest Denver would be very near and dear to my heart, and we need to look at these bilingual services, whether or not we're, our teachers and our schools are really following the consent decree, the modified consent decree.
Thank you so much. Carolina?
When I think about my priorities, I think about my own personal experience within the classroom, more so when I taught seventh grade multilingual learners. And what I notice is that they were in seventh grade, however, they were performing, reading what was equivalent to a third grade level. It left me wondering and questioning as to, like, is this a multilingual challenge barrier, or is this just poor instruction over the course of the years? When I came to find out and did a little more research and really knowing my students, I learned that they had been in school since kindergarten. Left me wondering then, what happened and why did they go so long without this academic, without it being addressed? And it is the reason why I'm really putting my stake in the ground as to one of my biggest focus and priority is making sure that pathway readiness is inclusive of our little ones, starting at second grade, making sure that they are reading on grade level, meaning whether that's in Spanish or in English, because that really, truly will promote the love of learning and their long-term academic success.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jean?
This conversation is extremely important as being an Afro-Latino as well. On my mother's side, I have family that moved from Puerto Rico that speaks no English and has struggled to adapt to school in, in America. And on my father's side, I understand the stigma of being Black in America as well, and that, how that intersectionality crosses itself in our classrooms. We need people in front of our kids that understand our children are willing to put in the work to educate, to learn, and to disrupt some of those systems of oppression that, that have existed in our school system for far too long. It also requires that we create a culturally sustaining environment where each and every child has the opportunity to be their true, authentic self. It is there that we can make sure that our kids can focus on learning because according to Maslow's hierarchy of needs, if you provide those basic needs on the bottom end, you can reach that self-actualization state where everybody gets to unlock their brilliance and be prepared for a world that, when they graduate, that they are successful and can, and can acclimate themselves into whatever path they choose.
Time.
Thank you. Michelle?
So for, excuse me, increasing academic, academic achievement in the classrooms, we need to make sure, one, that the teachers are getting the support that they need. So we hear from our teachers that they have to be counselors, parents, coaches, the list goes on. So we need to make sure that we are adequately staffing the school, adequately staffing the school, making sure that not just our students, but that our teachers have the social and emotional support that they need. When it specifically comes to Black and Brown students, that means that we have to make sure that we have social and emotional support that looks like them, right? That can be responsive. We also want to make sure that there's intentional professional development, also bringing programs like geometry and construction. And we can talk about that after this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jose?
This is a great question. And when I launched my campaign, I thought about my own self and how I navigated 10 Denver Public Schools, and they never really saw a problem. They were just focused on my Iowa Basic Skills Test and if I was passing the grade. Unfortunately, our students right now are dealing, coming out of a pandemic, and as I lead the Colorado Association for Infant Mental Health, first and foremost, it's going to be mental wellness. I will lead with a focus on mental wellness in order to get to student academic achievement. Maslow before Bloom, I love that the other candidates are taking a charge of what I've been talking about during this campaign. Along with that, we will do a universal assessment of literacy and math, will gauge us, the ability to gauge where the students are that day. From that, we will create professional development, which focuses on social situation and strong emotional classroom climate, how these educators engage with the students of color so they don't see them as a deficit. So what they bring into the classroom is not seen as a deficit. And then from that, community partnerships, which will lead to retention, and then reform in the HR department. Because if we can't retain Black teachers that look like our students, then we are failing.
Time.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have the last question from the audience, and this is directed to candidate at District Three and at large, and I'll be starting with Nikki over there at the end. Do you think DPS should end student-based funding? Do you think DPS should end student-based funding? If so, how should school be funded? Nikki.
Sure. So that is a wonderful question. I mean, I would absolutely like to work co-governance. I mean, I want to work with the legislature to see that what we can do to change per-pupil based funding in DPS and across the state. I mean, there's several other things, though, that we need to be doing and that we can be doing in a much more immediate sense to be addressing funding issues within DPS. The fact of the matter is that there are several significant examples where we are just not allocating money wisely. And the one that we've been talking about for years in the activist community and still have done nothing about is the bloated, massive, entrenched central administration. It's time for us to elect real progressive candidates who are going to make real changes, who are going to figure out where we can simplify admin, make cuts, and move that money into the schools that really need it. And on top of that, I just want to add with my last few seconds, recruitment marketing, so much money in DPS goes toward recruitment marketing that isn't even, obviously, isn't even the administration of public education. I would like to see us ban recruitment marketing entirely and direct all, every penny to education. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen? Are you okay?
When you implement something that's designed to be effective and it isn't effective, then you need to stop doing it. Student-based budgeting has starved schools of resources, and that's a failure of leadership. And the fact that we have these small schools in precarious situations, combined with a competitive choice process that is pitting schools against each other for their very survival, is a significant organizational problem that is a result of a lack of leadership. These are the kinds of things that we have to address, starting at a leadership level with a clear vision and policy, and then back it up with the resources. Schools should never be left in a position where they are not able to offer our parents and their children the full, full aspects of a rich and engaging educational experience.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I, I think we need to also understand that over the last, maybe seven to 10 years, our district has moved from what was just this flat, standard-based student funding to what we now have equity weights, where we're looking at what are the actual needs of students and how does the money follow the needs of students, right? Folks who've not been in the work for a while maybe don't know that, but those of us who are in the work understand that we have, that the district has been trying to course-correct with equity weights, right? Is that enough? No. Because we, one, don't have enough funding in the system to meet all of the needs that our schools have. I think we also, when we think about funding, we need to look at the ability that some schools have to raise an obscene amount of dollars that other schools can't, right? The, the last job that I had overseeing six schools, and I'll tell you, from Montclair to Willow, the ability for one school to raise money to support their kids and the ability of another school not to be able to do it was tremendous. And so we need to look at not just per pupil, but we need to look at all dollars that go into the school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
So when we talk about a real progressive voice, a real progressive voice talks about what we're for and not what we're against. So what we're for here is ensuring that we know what needs to be funded downtown and that we know how dollars get to our students, and that we make sure that we know how to best get dollars to our students. So the question is, does student-based budgeting do that? And the answer is no. So how do we, how do we change that? How do we think creatively? Because the, the state says to us, here's how we're giving you your dollars based on your October count and your student-based budgeting. But we are in no way required to do that for our schools. So what does it look like to think creatively and say, every school needs the following things? And start there. And get every school what it needs, and that's how we budget to our schools. Make sure that our schools get what they need to make sure our students get what they need. That's what's essential. It's not about cutting. It's about thinking about it creatively and making the changes that have to take place for our students.
Thank you, Scott. Marla?
I suggest that DPS decentralize and give the schools more independence and allow the teachers to plan and research their curriculum according to their students' demographics. Teachers are closer to the students, and parents know their kids and love their kids more than any other, other teacher. And working together with the parents to make the best curriculum. Every child is different, and every child can learn the basics. So I suggest that we go back to the basics. Literacy matters if we want equal opportunity. And my vision for DPS is to decentralize the district and bring back the parents into education. Because with the parents, we will change education, and education will transform for the better because they represent the students.
Thank you, Marla. Yes.
Yeah, so we definitely need to get rid of student-based funding and move to a students' needs funding system. A lot of it's already been talked about here, the inequities of our October count, as Scott pointed out so nicely earlier. But all this starts with understanding exactly how our money's already being spent. And everyone could have a solution, but we haven't seen the full picture of the problem yet. That's why Carrie's been pushing Dr. Marrero to do a forensic audit, and we're going to do one, and we'll finally be able to go ahead and see where every penny's being spent so we know exactly where it's wasted, and we could get it back in the classroom and back to serving our students where it belongs.
Thank you. Yes, Mike?
I think we have to recognize that we have a state problem, not just a district problem. Colorado funds education, I think 44th in the nation, depending on which statistic you're looking at. We need to build an awareness across our community that the funding itself is not working for all students throughout the district. We need to do more in communicating across the district the awareness of this situation so that we don't compete with each other all the time as one area to another. As I walk the neighborhoods in East Central area, I hear concerns about budgeting needs for the local schools in my area as much as we do in those schools that are being considered for closure. This is a reality. Schools should not be dependent on raising monies in order to have the right resources in their schools. We need to have fixed amounts and fixed resources that are going to every school, such as art, music, and PE, and every elementary school, and then we look at ways to support the needs of those, those schools in terms of their mental and health and social, emotional supports. But we've got to start working collaboratively across the district. We've got to quit being in silos and being competing against each other, no matter what our governing system, no matter what our area of the district.
Thank you so much. And we are at the end of the series of questions, and again, if we did not get a chance to get to your question, please reach out to the candidate, and they have their website on the handout that you have received. So we would like, at this point, to give the candidate 60 seconds for closing remark, wrap-up and closing remark, and we'll start with Sushi here. So 60 seconds for closing remark. Thank you.
My name is Sochi Gaitan. I'm a candidate for Denver School Board in Southwest Denver, District Two, and I want to ensure that we get DPS on the right track, that we are doing a forensic audit, as many of my colleagues up here had mentioned, because I want to ensure that we're moving some tax dollars from that top-heavy administration back down into the classrooms so that we're reducing classroom sizes. We're really ensuring some wraparound services for our neighborhood public schools that need them, deeply need them right now, resources back to our teachers that are in need so that they're providing that quality learning environment. Our students are needing our support as well, resources for our students, mental health supports, counselors, not cops, and, and really providing those resources, resources to them. We want our students to flourish, especially now that they're returning back to in-person learning. So that, for me, that's really, really important, that we're building these community partnerships with nonprofits in the area, business partnerships. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. As a school leader and teacher, I know firsthand the responsibility of what it means to be responsible for our kids. As a parent, as a daughter of immigrants, I know the sacrifices that are made by our loved ones each and every single day. And as a school board member, I'm going to make decisions that truly impact for the best interest for generations to come. And I am ready to use my experience and expertise in partnership with community to making sure that our students have a life full of options.
Thank you.
I think we've heard tonight a number of candidates speak for the need for change. I would like to stress the fact that I'm the only person running against an incumbent, and I believe strongly that we need new leadership on this board. I've had experience as a principal for 28 years. I've also been a teacher. Five of the teachers that I worked with at Mean Elementary for 12 years are now principals in Denver, along with several others who are principals in other areas. I know how to get things done. I know that we need effective decision-making on the board, and we need to make sure that we're honoring the needs of all of our students and our employees. We need to change that we've been working with our staff and with our communities so that we can restore the trust that we need in Denver throughout the district. And it's time for that change to happen throughout the voting that will happen this fall. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Dr. Carrie's running for reelection. Her number one thing right now is to continue the mental health supports that are so desperately needed right now, coming back from COVID. And every child has experienced trauma going through that. Beyond that, she's going to continue with the bold leadership that has brought so many positive changes to DPS for the past two years as her, the board president. Some of that is really just building the table. She has built the table and built trust with different communities. She stopped spending so much time pointing fingers and fighting with people, that she built relationships and she started talking. She wants to continue talking. She wants to continue talking to community. She wants to continue working with her board colleagues to build that stronger because that is the only way we're going to make DPS better.
Thank you. Jean?
Once again, I want to remind everybody, I am the only classroom teacher in District Four, and I'm struggling Four, and I'm struggling right now. My students are struggling right now. Their families are struggling, trying to figure out how to support their students right now. And it's time for us to kind of change the narrative about what, what our priorities are. Because our kids are suffering every single day, our teachers are struggling every single day, and we all need the support necessary in order for our kids to do what they need to do to be successful. So we have to put this, these things aside that are distracting from the work that needs to be done. We have wasted a lot of time and money on things that have nothing to do with our kids, and that's no longer acceptable. It's time to focus on what really matters and ask kids in the community first. We have to make sure that we, we providing the opportunities and access to experiences that will prepare our students for the problems that we won't even know exist 10 years from now. So vote for me, Jean for DPS, District Four, and I hope I earned your support here today.
Thank you.
So as a parent and now a community liaison at a different public school, I have and I always will advocate for teachers, students, parents, families, and community partners. Because in order to make this work, in order to make DPS the best school system that it can be, it takes community. So yes, that means we have to have change. Change equals community. And community equals change. I will, I, when I hear Jean talk, say this, this is why I'm doing it, because our teachers and our staff, they are struggling. So a vote for Michelle on November 2nd is a vote to keep those high-impacting teachers like Jean in the classroom, making positive change.
Thank you, Michelle. Jose?
Good evening, everybody. Once again, I'm Dr. Jose Silva. But first, I want to give a shout out to BFAC, Black Family Advocacy Council, who is in the house with us tonight. I'm running because I have had 28 years of a storied experience. I'm a former classroom teacher, so once a classroom teacher, always a classroom teacher. I just decided that it was important for me to go make policy changes at a much larger, broader level. And that's what I've done with my career. I've raised $40 million, helping to change institutional chains, send 300,000 kids to college through College Summit. I'm running because DPS has an integrity issue, DPS has an accountability issue, and DPS does not put students first. As somebody who values this, this is why I'm running. I don't have to get in this race. I'm in this race because students need a voice that will stand up for them. We need leadership that will fight for the greater good and not, that will not be able to stand alone and push back against those of the voices of the agenda. We need individuals fighting for the greater good, and most importantly, individuals that will be bridge builders and those that have done the work. Once a classroom teacher, always a classroom teacher.
Thank you.
I'm running because I believe that transforming education must come with the help of parents. Parents have the absolute right to raise their kids, and they love their children more than anything. And this is a constitutional right. The right comes from God, not government. I also believe that we need to focus on literacy, because literacy matters if we want equal opportunity. Literacy and moral virtue are what empower students, and we need to support and empower teachers to find the best curriculum for their students. So a vote for me is a vote in the right direction to put American education back on the front line as number one.
Thank you.
I want to open by thanking Papa Ja, the Colorado League of Charter Schools and gals again for having us here tonight and for giving us this opportunity. That's number one. Number two, I'm Scott Esserman, and I'm candidate for Denver Public Schools Board at Large, and I'd love your support and your vote, along with a whole lot of other folks who are supporting me and, and have donated and are ensuring their support for me. A wide variety of people who think that I am the one that can take this polarized dialogue that we have and this polarized monologue and bring it together. That includes Attorney General Phil Weiser. That includes Attorney General Candidate Joe Salazar and former member of the State House. That includes State Senator Janet Buckner. That includes State Senator Chris Hansen. That includes Candy Say Debaca and Amanda Sawyer. Go ahead, if you're curious, and look on my webpage, Esserman for Denver Kids, at dot com, dot net, dot org, we got all of them. And, and see, you're going to find people there who you like and people there who you don't like. I'm running because it's about our students, and we've got to make that conversation about our students today and every day moving forward.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Vern?
I am the son of a Black teacher who in 1994 introduced me to a world of advocating for what is the right thing. As we walked around 900 grand, I remember fighting with her for her and her peers to be treated like professionals. I remember that march around, o, over and over again, around 900 grand, yelling for teachers to be treated with respect, yelling for teachers to be treated the way that they deserve to be treated. I am a Black son. I am also a Black father, who in 2014 stood up to a superintendent and other colleagues who wanted to ramrod something down my community's throat. And I knew standing up against them meant that I was going to lose my job. I knew that I was going to get pushed out. But I stood up as a Black father and said, you know what? My daughter, her peers deserve the very best. You need somebody who is going to, has a proven track record of fighting against a system that does not want us liberated, does not want us free, does not want us educated. And that is Vernon Jones, Jr. We look forward to having your vote and support.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen?
I know a lot of folks here may have already picked their candidate. I became aware of that back last summer when I started to explore entering the race and I was told that people were already, had already picked their teams. So I find myself still in the race as a truly independent candidate. And while we talk about the need to bring people together, it's also very clear that there are two sides and a lot of money going in to get one side or the other elected. And I think that should give us pause. Because this should be about the qualifications of people willing to serve on the board and how those qualifications match the need that we have on this board to effectively govern. So even if you have major choice, I would invite you to check out JaneShirley.com and maybe it'll give you some ways to think about and question and push your own candidate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a pastor, I gotta say amen. I'm a pastor, so I just gotta say amen.
Thank you, Nikki.
Let's hope the chair survives this one. I am proud to be a champion of neighborhood schools and fighting the privatization of public education. I also understand that there are thousands of charter families out there that absolutely love their schools and that charters and choice have a place within DPS. However, I believe that we need to address the system-based issues that exacerbate inequity and that are creating essentially a class system within DPS. We can orient DPS to the needs of all of our individual communities, and by doing so, we can maximize the effectiveness of each school model within the district, maximize the models to the betterment of the entire district, not just to the students that are within a single individual school. And lastly, I truly believe that by empowering educators and by making charters more transparent and accountable to the communities, to the students, to the families, we can, we can make sure that they better serve all of our communities and they better serve DPS as a system. So thank you all very much.
So thank you all, and we are getting to the end of our program. The Colorado League of Charter Schools and the African Leadership Group would like to thank you all for attending this forum. As I mentioned earlier on the opening remark, it was great showing up, but the job is not done yet. We still have to go and vote and still have to go and galvanize our community members to do their civic duty by voting as well. Please help me giving a round of applause to the candidate. Thank you so much for being so respectful and generally answering to all the questions. Thank you and have a great evening. Thank you.